Okay.
And council won't have quorum because it's just going to be the three of them, so.
Okay.
So we'll call the special meeting to order and we will immediately turn it over to Baker Tilly to begin with the draft of our financial plan.
Okay, thank you. Paige Sansone with Baker Tilly. Yes, I have a draft of your financial plan and I, we did work in some changes related to SEA one, the recent legislation. But I want you to know that this is preliminary right now. We are developing a model at Baker Tilly to model all these different changes to do a parcel by parcel analysis. We should have that done hopefully by the beginning of July, but we've got some estimates in here that should be pretty good estimates, but we're going to get some better estimates, I think, as we move into July. So first off, I just, I'm going to start on page one, but I'm not going to read word for word. I'm just going to cover the high points. So I do want to talk about some of the legislative changes. There was a number of changes made to assess values. I mean, that's really why taxpayers are paying more. It's because the value of their property is increasing. It's generally not because the tax rate is increasing. So there were some property tax relief components in the legislation. One is restructuring the homestead deductions. By the time we get to 2031, you'll, you'll be able to get a deduction on your home. That's like 66% of your home value. That's a lot. That means you're only paying on one-third of your home value. But, so that might be good for a taxpayer, but that means that your net assessed values will either decline or be very limited in the growth. It also adds deductions to what we call 2% properties. So agricultural land, long-term care facilities, and residential rental properties will now get deductions, and that's something that they have not gotten in the past. So again, that's going to affect the assessed value. It, the legislation also exempts new business personal property investment from the 30% depreciation floor, which just basically means new business personal property put into place January 1st, 2025 could depreciate all the way down to zero, which means they wouldn't pay taxes on it. Again, all of this to say that either your assessed value will decline or not grow as it has grown in the past, which could drive up property tax rates and drive up circuit breaker credits. So that would be a negative impact, we think. And I, we filled in how we think that's going to affect your property tax collections. The maximum levy, so you know that your property tax levy for your funds grows by a small growth factor every year. The legislation caps that growth at 4% for 2026. If the legislature did not cap this growth, it would have been about 5.6%. For years after 2026, it's supposed to be the same formula we've had for years. It's based on the six-year average of non-farm personal income and it is capped at 6%. But I would not be surprised if the legislature came back again and put another 4% cap, because if you do this calculation for '27, '28, '29, we're in the 5% range. And I don't think they're gonna, I think they may cap it again. I mean, we're just guessing at this point. But, so in, in this plan, we've worked in just a 4% growth each year from here on out. Hope, I mean, maybe we'll get more growth, but right now, you know, they, they easily went in and capped it again for '26. They had already capped it for '24 and '25 at 4%. So something new for the budget process, not this year, but starting for the budget in 2030, so that would really be 2029, starting for the 2030 budget. If you want to take any growth on your levy at all, whether it's the 4% or something less, you will have to have an extra public hearing. So you normally, you have one public hearing and an adoption. Now you'll have to have two public hearings and then adoption. But again, that doesn't start until 2029 for the budget 2030, just kind of giving you a heads up that that's coming down the road. Now, page two. Here's where there were some big changes to local income tax. We are going to have a completely different structure in relation to local income tax. This is subject to change because I keep hearing chatter that the legislature might do something in the next session. I, all these changes, you just never know what they're going to do. But here's what it is right now. All the local income taxes we know it right now is going to expire at the end of 2027. That means you will no longer receive, I think you get, trying to think, certified shares, economic development, public safety, and you have a jail. You're not going to receive that anymore. Instead, you will be able to adopt a 1.2% county services local income tax. That's your max for your county unit alone. So all that revenue would just go to the county unit, and I'm going to tell you how much that's going to be in a second. You, as a county council, can also adopt a couple other LITS. One is a .4% local income tax for fire protection and EMS, but that doesn't go to the county. It goes to fire districts, territories, and providers of those EMS and fire services. You can also adopt local income tax for non-qualifying municipalities. So those are municipalities under 3,500. And also for non-municipal units, which is basically townships and libraries. So it's going to be on you to do that. Some of these require a petition from these entities. So in 2027, by July 1, they'll be petitioning you, I'm sure, for you to adopt it. Now municipalities that are 3,500 and above in population, they can adopt their own local income tax up to 1.2%. Now, what's different than the current structure right now is that a single taxpayer is not going to be able to pay more than 2.9%, but it's based on where you live. So like if I live in a city that's 3,500 and above, I could pay a city 1.2% plus your county rate on top of that at 1.2%. So that would be 2.4%, but I can, I cannot go above the 2.9%. So it's also going to be the county councils really authority to try to keep that rate. You have to look by location to make sure it doesn't go above. And where the rates, where you're going to need to adjust rates potentially, if everybody goes to the max, is the fire protection and EMS, the one for the townships and the libraries. Those are the rates we think are going to get adjusted, just to keep it at 2.0%.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you just say, I just want to make sure I understood what you just said. Did you just say for the county limit, they also, if you live in city, you also get charged that in the city? So they're getting double charged.
You'll get, well, the, the one, the city residents only pay the city one, but if I live in the city, yes, I will pay the county services rate and the city rate. That's how it is.
I, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, right now, your county, you have a county-wide rate now. The only difference now is that that county-wide rate for county services is going to go all to the county unit and not get distributed to anyone else. And then the larger cities will be able to adopt their own, and it will all go just to them. The only one, the only ones that will be distributed out are the fire and EMS, which the county will distribute that out. That'll be distributed by population of service area, and then also townships and libraries. That will be distributed based on the population of the service area. So you don't have to really worry about this until 2027, but in 2027, if nothing else changes, you all will need to adopt your lit, and it's by October 1. And then remember the entities that want the lit are going to have to petition you by July 1 of 2027. And there's a lot of entities that want to go ahead and adopt it now, but they can't. It's not, it's not possible. You have to wait until 2027. I don't know why people-
So they would have to work county council no by July 1 of 27?
Yep, correct, correct. And this table on page two just shows the different types of local income tax. Just for your information, the ma, each one has a maximum rate, but if you add all these up, I think it adds up to like 3%. You can only, each taxpayer can only pay 2.9% as a max. So that's a really big difference when it comes to local income tax. So what does it mean for the county on page three? So I've got a chart there that shows what, what you have been certified to receive in 2025 is 11.3 million. This is just the county unit shares, and it includes certified shares, public safety, economic development, and correctional facilities. So you're getting 11.3 in all those buckets combined. In 2028, you'll have to move all those expenses that you're currently paying from, from public safety, economic development, and correctional facilities. You'll have to move that to the general fund because this, this county services local income tax can only be deposited in the general fund. But if you go to the maximum rate, right now, we're estimating that would generate 14.1 million. So that's a little bit more than what you're getting now. So that's, that's good news right now. You might not like that 1.2% rate, but I mean, we said it that way because it looks like you're going to need to go to the max to a certain extent. But we can, you know, do different things with this rate. I think you can do it in increments of .1%, I think. So we could run different scenarios, but for now, we just wanted to show you what the max would look like. And again, that all comes to the county. I'm working with some other counties where we put them to the max and it was not enough. They're going to be underwater by like four, five million dollars. It really is very interesting because it depends on the area, it seems like, and what rate they're at now. You have a relatively low local income tax rate. You've been able to live with that low. It's like 1.68 or something like that. And, and I know that when this hits in 2028, there's going to be a lot of taxpayers paying a lot more for their local income taxes, but presumably, they're supposed to be paying less in property tax. So in my mind, it's kind of just a shift. Yeah, you're getting this property tax relief, but you're going to pay for it on your income. And you, we, we do think you are going to have a reduction in what you're collecting in revenue for property tax because of all these legislative changes. That's why we're saying you're probably going to want to consider going to the max. But, but you've got time to think about it. We can run different scenarios. But so far, I like that at least you have the ability to raise enough to be able to cover your, your, because you've got a lot of things coming out of these different pockets of, of money or these different buckets. So the, the chart on the bottom of page three just shows where you're at now. So you, yes, your rate is 1.6829, and it's, you've got a 1% certified shares. You've got a .25% public safety, .2% economic development, .2% correctional facility. You also have a property tax relief local income tax. Now, what that does is it provides a credit to the taxpayers. So that credit gets issued on the tax bill first, then the circuit breakers. So probably what's going to happen, because this gets eliminated at the end of 2027, without that credit, more, more taxpayers may be hitting the tax caps, which translates to property tax reduction for the county unit and really all units in the county. But again, we've built in an estimate, and we will get to that here shortly. So again, let's just kind of recap. I think you're going to be using local income tax to fill in the shortfalls for, for what's, what the legislation is going to cause for the property tax relief. And I think that's why, obviously, they did that. They said, here, we're going to do property tax relief, but we're going to give you an option to try to bridge that gap. Page number four, right now, your circuit breaker credits are really pretty low. Less than 1% of what you levy in property tax is returned to taxpayers in the form of credits. That's pretty good. There's two things happening there. You've got a relatively low property tax rate, and you've got that local income tax lit, property tax relief. But, so let's look at that chart on page four. The blue bars are the actual collections for '23 through what we think you're going to receive in '24, like what you're collecting. That green line is what you're, what you're levying. So you don't collect everything that you levy because of those credits. Well, you're pretty close. You're collecting almost what you're levying, which is good, but as we start to get in 2026, that's the first year of the impact for Senate-enrolled Act One, now we're starting to see a gap. Like you're going to collect less. In 2027, you're going to collect less. So by the time we get to 2029, which is as far out as we went, really, we've got, it's a five-year phase-in of this legislation, so it's going to continue to creep up a little bit there. But you're probably only going to collect about 8 million of the 9.4 that you levy. Yeah, so, so are you going to get more than you're getting sitting here right now? No, probably not, because look, I have you at 8,66,000, and I'm showing in 2029, it's probably going to be just over 8 million. So that's where we're going to see the impact. It's going to be reduction of property tax revenue caused by the property tax relief. I mean, if you give somebody relief, that means they're not paying as much. That means you're not going to be getting as much. But luckily, you have the option of filling in this gap with that local income tax. And when we get to the general fund cash flow, we'll have a better picture of what that looks like. On page five, it's just, if you're interested, the county-wide, you only have 414,000 of, of circuit breaker credits that are issued to taxpayers. That's really low for counties. Most counties are way over that. And again, it's because your tax rates are relatively low and you've got that property tax relief. The county unit just makes up 16.7% of all those credits. You can see the school makes up the largest portion, and that's typical because the higher the tax rate, the hi, the more circuit breaker credits are issued. So the school has the highest tax rate. Some good news is on, on the bottom chart on page five, is what I've been telling everyone that I visit is your tax rates have not gone up. They've actually gone down. And this is the same chart I see all over the state of Indiana. It's, the tax, it's, tax rates aren't the problem. It was the value of property going up. So you can see in 2021, your tax rate was 43 cents. It is now about 32 cents. It's .3182. So your tax rate since 2021 has decreased by 27%. That's pretty good. And the reason why is because your net assessed value has increased by over 50% during that same time period. So again, rising, it's an inverse relationship. As we have rising values of property, the tax rate tends to drop. But see, now that we've got this change coming, we're going to see the opposite potentially happening. If your net assessed value doesn't keep up with the growth rate in the property tax, like we were saying, 4%, if your assessed value is growing less than that, maybe 2% or 3%, you're going to start seeing your rate creep back up. That's how that works. And as the rate goes up, circuit breaker credits go up. More people hit the tax caps. Page six is really not too bad. I mean, the, these are your main operating funds. It's general reassessment, health, motor vehicle highway, statewide 911, lit public safety, lit economic development, and lit correctional facilities. Those are pretty much your main, your big major funds. A lot of it funded with local income tax and property tax. This line isn't too bad, but I have built in the 1.2% max on the local income tax. If we didn't go to the max, you might see it start creeping down a little bit. But if you look historically, so 2023, you ended with a cash balance and all these funds combined of about 19.8 million. You actually increased your cash reserves at the end of 2024 to 24.1 million. We're expecting you probably will have another increase in your cash. But then, starting in 2026, when we have that Senate-enrolled Act One stuff hitting, that's the first year it hits, and then 2027, you're probably going to go down by, I don't know, maybe 1.2 million. And then you might get a little bit of a recovery there once you adopt that lit for 2028, starting in 2028. Now, we did just take your 2025 budget and build in a 3% growth. I don't know what you all are planning for 2026. But as a standard baseline model, that's what we do. We build in a 3% growth off of 2025, and then we go forward. So that's what this chart is based on. So we can, we'll get more into, once we look at the cash flow schedule, what I think you should be budgeting for, for 2026 in total. So on page seven, we just kind of are summarizing a few of the considerations. Again, local income tax, that's a big one. In 2027, you'll need to decide where you want to land. We've got this model built, so we can easily plug in if you want to see something less than 1.2%, what that, what that looks like. I will say this. So as I've, I've been out talking with many counties in the last few weeks, and there's some counties out there, and I kind of like how they're thinking, they're saying, well, you know, 1.2%, I might just go ahead and adopt that full amount, even if it does give me a positive net cash flow, like it's a little bit too much cash, because you know what you can do then is reduce your property tax. You are not penalized if you go under the maximum levy. You can always go back up if you need it. So by reducing your property tax, that provides tax relief, number one. But number two, it helps bring down that circuit breaker loss as well. So you might want to think about that. If you're thinking, you know, I don't know if I want to do the whole 1.2, well, you can offset it with a reduction in property tax if you, if you need to or want to. I'm just throwing that out there because I think there's a lot of counties that are just thinking, we're just going to take the one, the full 1.2. We have to, because we're going to be facing all these losses. But you don't have to, but there are ways that you can level things out a little bit. Capital plans, we, you know, just a suggestion to just continuously have a good five-to-10-year capital plan so that we can try to plan ahead with some of the larger capital projects that you have, and then identify solutions for funding those capital projects. Sustainable budgets, we talked before this even, this meeting even started about zero-based budgeting and priority-based budgeting. I think with all these challenges and pressures coming down the road with this property tax relief bill, I think we're going to have to really start looking at what is priority in our budgets. I'm going to identify here towards the end, some, some departments that seem to consistently underspend their budget. So then I have to wonder, why do every year they're budgeting so much, but they're not spending it? And the reason why that is important is because you, as a county, are allocating X amount of property tax to those funds, but they're not utilizing it. That property tax perhaps needs to go back to the general fund, you know, where it's, where you can utilize it for anything, not just those particular functions. But again, that all goes back to, we need to really look at our budgets and focus on priorities. And I would take a cautious approach until we see how, how all of this falls out. You know, if you start adding recurring costs to your budget, like salaries and wages or new positions, that's going to impact you in the future. And yes, 2026, it's not a huge impact to you, but out to 2031, yeah, now we're looking at a shortfall of maybe 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. So be thinking about, you know, I think 2026 is going to be the easiest budget year, so to speak, because we can kind of see what you're going to lose, but it's going out to the future that I am most concerned about because this stuff is going to start ramping up. There's a five-year phase-in on some of these things, and it's going to start ramping up. QM Capital Development Fund, I've brought this up before, but if you, right now, your rate is, I think, like a penny and a half or .016, I can't remember specifically, but you have the ability to reestablish your CCD fund up to the maximum rate of .0333 if you want. And that would generate an additional amount of property tax of about 460,000 a year for capital projects and emergency funds. That is above and beyond that 4% growth cap that was given to us. This, this particular fund's outside that cap, so you can actually get additional property tax. Yes, it's an increase to the tax rate, but it's like a penny and a half. It's not that much of an increase.
Does that also go away?
No.
Or that's, that will stay?
That will stay. That will stay. And if you ever want to do that, you have until May 31 of a given year to do that for the following year.
That's a commissioner approval?
Yes, it's commissioner approval. That is correct. Rainy day fund transfer. So in this recent legislative session, there seemed to be a lot of focus on fund balances in operating funds, like the general fund. And, and you all have a pretty healthy fund balance in there. Well, you'll see that when we get to it. You might want to start thinking about transferring some of that fund balance to the rainy day fund. Your rainy day fund has a very low balance. It's only like $55,000. You might want to transfer some of that over to the rainy day fund for, for a couple reasons. One, your fund balance in the general fund exceeds 50%. So it exceeds six months of your operating cost. That's, once you get above 50%, you should start thinking about ways to utilize that. Not for recurring costs, for one-time expenditures, not recurring costs. But secondly, it just, you know, it shows that you're putting that money aside for something. You can develop a plan for what that something is. It could just be an emergency. That's really what rainy day funds are for, an emergency. If there should be a storm or something that tears off part of the roof, I mean, you need to have something until insurers can reimburse you, or maybe they don't reimburse the whole thing. You are able in 2025, there's, there is a transfer limitation annually. That is 10% of your DLGF-approved budget. So for 2025, if you wanted to, you could transfer about 3.1 million over to the rainy day fund. And you can only transfer from general. That's the only fund that you can transfer from, because that's the only fund that is non-restricted.
So you can use rainy day fund for anything?
You can use rainy day fund for anything.
Anything. Same as county general.
Yes, correct.
Because it shouldn't be set in a county general.
Yeah, it's, you're just putting it aside, basically. I mean, there's nothing wrong with keeping it in general, but I'm just telling you that the last legislative session, there were people really looking at fund balances, like, oh, this, they don't need all that money, so we can just cut their property tax, or we can do, I mean, obviously, they, they cut your growth factor, is what they did, but it, for, just for a few reasons, I mean, you, you can set that money aside. So-
And at any time, we could transfer money from rainy day back to county general, even if it is only to cover wages or payroll.
You can, but I wouldn't use it to do that.
No.
Yeah, but if it was an emergency, yes.
It could be transferred back into county general, and it's not, it doesn't have to be ear-tagged or restricted in any way.
That's absolutely correct. So now I'm going to go to page 11 and 12. It's, it's the general fund, but unfortunately, it's on two pages just because it's so big. So let's look at 11, page 11. I highlighted in yellow some important things I want to draw your attention to. So let's look up at the top where it says estimated excess shortfall from SEA one. That's the legislative impact of this property tax relief. So in 2026, we are estimating currently that you will collect 471,000 less than if we didn't have this new legislation. That's really what this means. So if you look down on line seven, that is your net property tax. So let's just put that in perspective. In 2025, I think you're probably going to collect about 5.7 million property tax, 5,693. So you have a very low circuit breaker loss. It's not even 50,000. But then let's go to 2026. All of this is really circuit breaker. I just wanted to break out the piece so you can see what was due to legislative effects. I think that you're going to collect probably about 5.4 million. So the loss of revenue is 471,000 from the property tax relief, and then we just took out basically what you would normally lose in circuit breaker. It's really all circuit breaker, but I wanted you to see that piece broken out. And you can see, it starts going up. Look, by 2029, we're thinking it's going to be $900,000. So it is going to creep up as we go. That's just because of these things are getting phased in. Another line that's important to look at is line 18, lit county services. So that's what we're estimating you would bring in if you did the full 1.2. This is probably a conservative estimate because you have experienced some growth, and we're basing this on what's happening now. So this may be even a conservative estimate. This is based on your adjusted gross income in your county right now. But it, you could see some growth by then, for sure. But we wanted to try to look at worst-case scenario. The two lines above it, on line 16 and 17, this is your certified shares that gets deposited into your general fund now, and that will be eliminated starting in 2028. That's why it zeros there. You've been able to get some lit supplemental, like supplemental distributions of lit the last three years. And in fact, this year, it was almost $900,000. That will be eliminated as well. So no more supplemental lit and no more of the normal lit as we know it today. So let's look on line 21, under the 2026 column. So what can you budget if you want a balanced budget, where you're balancing your recurring costs with your receipts? I'm thinking it's going to be about 15.1 million, which is a million dollars less, quite frankly. Um, which is a million dollars less, quite frankly, than you had the previous, or this current year. But, you know, look, look at what you've been spending out of general. So look on line thirty five. You, you in twenty twenty three spent twelve point seven million. In twenty twenty four, you spent twelve point three million. And I know we had CARES Act money in there that was helping, you know, so this might be a little distorted. Um, twenty twenty five, you're budgeting to spend fourteen point six. So having fifteen point one shouldn't be too terrible of a challenge. But you wanna try to keep your, your budgets within that fifteen point one or lower. But if we move to twenty twenty seven, now I think you're gonna have fifteen point two. What, what it is going to be is you're just gonna have very small growths on your, your revenues going forward, very small. I mean, fifteen point one going to fifteen point two, that's like a hundred thousand dollars for your fifteen million dollar budget. That's not gonna go very far. So I guess that's kinda the challenge you're facing is to try to keep your budget in rain for the next couple of years. Until you can get to where you can adopt some lit to help fill in those gaps. So by the time we get to twenty twenty eight, this is where, you know, your revenue bumped up quite a bit to twenty three point three million. Cause I've got that one point two percent lit in there. But your budget is also gonna jump up because look at all of these highlighted expenses on lines twenty eight through thirty one. That are going to have to be shifted to the general fund. It's what you're paying for out of CEDIT, correctional, public safety, and you've got that new jail lease rental payment. But even when I moved all that over there and I increased the budgets all these years by three percent. I mean, I'm seeing a pretty close to balanced budget. But again, you've got that lit. If you don't wanna go to the max, then you may have to figure out a way to reduce some of your budgets. And I will also say that you've got two funds. Well, let's talk about, we're gonna get to statewide nine one one, but that fund gives me the most concern. Because you're not getting enough state distribution to cover the expenditures in that fund. So I think at some point, maybe starting as early as twenty twenty six, you're gonna need to shift some of those expenditures over to general.
I just talked to the director about that.
Yes, she, yes.
We have got to look at this.
You've got to shift. And so that's probably, I mean, I estimated maybe a hundred and fifty thousand worth of expenditures. Are gonna have to be funded by general. There's just no way around it, I don't think. Um, and then your reassessment fund, that's one, when we get to that cash flow, we can talk about. That's one where consistently that, that department is underspending its budget consistently, year after year. But we keep throwing property tax at it. So it, I don't know if we need to shift some property tax from that fund over to general. I'm thinking maybe two hundred thousand. I mean, what, I guess we have to delve into, what's the reasoning behind budgeting? That fund, I think they're only spending like sixty percent of it every year. So that might be something we wanna take a look at.
I'm sorry, what department was that?
Reassessment. The reassessment.
Kim, you wanna speak on that? Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, as far as our appraisal services, that's a hundred and ninety thousand that has always been budgeted. Even when I come into office in twenty seventeen, that, when we went to cyclical, the four year cyclical cycle. Um, and that was in twenty fourteen. That fund's seen a very, very large increase in funds. Because it used to be that it was spread over ten years. We had one point four million dollars that went into that fund, I believe in twenty fourteen. Then we went from our ten years cyclical cycle to four year cycle. Um, we have been fortunate enough that our, our appraisal services have not charged us any more than what they have.
So that's it. You're just not spent, I mean, it's just not as expensive as it has been in the past.
Well, and I, I know, I talked to council about it when I had my budget meeting last week. We're up for bids for the new cycle.
Okay.
They're gonna come in this year because our new four year cycle starts next year.
Okay.
That's gonna increase from the hundred and thirty five thousand that we've been paying. I know that's coming.
Yeah.
And we're okay now, so I didn't, you know, I didn't ask for anymore. There's also a forty four thousand dollar line in there, which is for contracted services. We were paying when we went through and that has always been there. I haven't added, I haven't added nothing as far as line items in any of, either budget we have. But um, we were paying when we, when I come into office in seventeen, we went through data conversion. We got rid of the old Manitron system, brought in Exoft. And we were kind, we had a four year, six year contract with them. We were paying that out of there and now that's all taken care of. So that's a chunk that is in there too.
So this could be an opportunity that, that budget could be reduced some. I mean, not a lot, but it could, for some of the things that you're not utilizing it for could be reduced. And that way you could, you could uh, shift some of that property tax from reassessment over to general. We can take a look at that during budget time just to see, but. Um, and I mean, granted, general really doesn't need it right now, but you might need it in the future. So this is not like a critical thing. It was just something that we noticed while we were preparing this that, you know, that there was some underspend there. Um, page thirteen, I'm not gonna go through every one of these graphs, but let's just look at the general fund graph. I, cause I forgot to mention, these dotted lines are like guardrails. So the red dotted line is a fifteen percent cash reserve. So we don't ever want you to be, have cash, ending cash, that's less than fifteen percent of your dispersments. That's only two and a half months of reserves. So that, you don't wanna drop below that. This dotted green line is fifty percent, like six months reserves. Well, you guys were right about at fifty percent at the end of twenty twenty three and now you're getting back up there. So that's why I mentioned, um, you know, you might wanna just make some transfers over to rainy day. Just, just kinda get that money pushed off to, you know, for safekeeping, I guess, in case you need it in the future. Okay, so this is the reassessment fund. And it does look like the cash is gonna go down on page fourteen. But that's because we assume that three hundred and sixty one thousand, which was budgeted, will all be spent. And then we've increased it three percent because that's our baseline model. But if you look in the past, really what's been spent out of that fund is two hundred and five thousand in twenty twenty three. And two hundred and thirty, almost two hundred and forty thousand in twenty twenty four. So it's not even approaching that three hundred and sixty thousand. Now, with the new contract, maybe that'll go up. We can just look at it then. Like, no major changes have to be made, but I'm just drawing it to your attention in case you do need additional revenues in the general fund. This might be a place to get it. Um, so look at the cash reserves at the end of twenty twenty four, one point one million. That's well, that's well above what is needed in that fund. Really, twenty five percent cash reserves would be good in this fund. At the end of twenty twenty five, we're thinking it could drop if they spend their whole budget. But it still would be eight hu, almost nine hundred thousand dollars in this fund. So we've just let it continue to drop. Let's just say no changes are made to the budget. By the time you get to twenty twenty nine, it'll be about thirty percent, which is still very good. But in twenty thirty, then if the budget stays like this, we may need to shift some property tax from general back over to this fund. But right now, I kept the levies the same with a little bit of growth, kept the budgets with three percent growth. But this one might be one to take a look at for the budget. And that's why the graph looks so bad, but again, I, we assume they're gonna spend everything and I really don't think that's gonna be the case, so. Page number sixteen is the health department. And this is another one where they don't seem to spend their whole budget, or at least in the past. But now, I think what's happening with this fund is that Health First Indiana. So you, you, the health department was able to shift some of these costs from here to their hu, Health First Indiana, which is a grant. But that's not guaranteed to continue. My understanding is it's twenty five and twenty six and then it's up for, you know, the legislature to decide if it's gonna go beyond that. So I probably wouldn't make any changes with this fund, although it looks like the cash is going up. It could be that more expenses will have to be shifted back to this fund. So it's, it's a healthy fund. It's got, you know, at the end of twenty twenty four, it had a hundred percent cash reserves, over a hundred percent. Um, you know, we're projecting for twenty twenty six on line eleven, about six hundred and seventy one thousand of revenue. So they could budget up to that. Um, if it, if the cash reserves continue to increase. We can maybe think about shifting a hundred thousand of property tax away from here over to general during the budget time. Um, but that looks, it looks pretty good. It just. I think it, it remains to be seen if they need that much property tax or not, but it all comes back to that Health First Indiana. Page eighteen is your motor vehicle highway fund and that doesn't, it's not funded by property tax. It's only funded by the state distribution of gas tax. So it's not going to be impacted by Senate enrolled act one. Um, we didn't, just to keep, be very conservative, we didn't build any growth into the revenue. So you're looking at about one point eight million dollars of revenue in twenty twenty six. Um, you're, we are assuming that you'll take uh, half of what you receive in that gas tax. And, and pay for the road restricted items out of your road restricted. So you'll see on line thirteen, I've, I reduced your budget, assuming you're just gonna pay for one point seven million. Of road restricted items out of your NVH restricted fund. Um, one thing I wanna bring up here, maybe you've already heard about it, the highway department, I'm sure has heard about it. That if you have, I think it's called a passer rating. It's basically your road ratings. If you meet a cer, a certain threshold for your road ratings, and I don't know if it's six percent or six point five percent. Um, I can't remember which it is, but if you meet that threshold and every highway department person I've talked to, they already know what I'm talking about. Then you only have to put forty percent in NVH restricted next year. And then you put sixty percent in your regular. So you want, might wanna talk to your highway department about that, see if you meet every, they always know. Like they'll know their passer rating right off the top of their head and then I can, if they don't know what the, they've also known what the threshold is. They just told me the other day, but I'm sorry, I can't remember if it was six or six point five. But that, that's benefit to you because then it opens it up and it's not so restrictive as to what you can use the money for. So that was just passed, but that won't start until next year, so we can find out kinda, you know, what you can do there.
What was the rate that you said?
The passer. I think it was six or six point five. I can't remember which, which number it was, six or six point five. But I think there was a, something N dot put on recently. That's why all the highway department people seem to know. Cause as soon as I start that, they're like, oh, we're at six point five or we're at six. We're good. So I, so I'm, I'm sure that your department head knows.
I'll find out.
And I can do some more looking. If, if they don't know, I'll, I'll figure out what that pa, passer rating is supposed to be. I just can't remember. Um, so anyway, this has been a pretty healthy fund and even though we're restrictive on what we can use it for. You know, it does look like the cash reserves are gonna go down, but if we can change that, flip that, so it's sixty percent going into here and forty percent in restricted. That's probably gonna help that by quite a bit. So, right now, you, you're, you look pretty good with that fund. Really, all your funds, ti, most of your funds are above the fifty percent cash reserve. So healthy funds, but want you to stay healthy going forward. On page twenty, this was the fund, as I went through all your funds that I had the most concern about. This fund is not funded with property tax. Um, it just has that statewide nine one one distribution that comes in. Uh, which is only about four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty four thousand. But the dispersments have been exceeding that. And this is where I think you're, you're really gonna have to move some of these expenses over to general. Some counties have to do that. You, you don't have control over what you're getting from the state. Some counties just have to do that. I think you're probably gonna have to move about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over to general. You can create a department in your general fund that's called nine one one.
We already have, I think, like six of our dispatchers are paid out of general.
Oh, okay, so you've already been down that road. Well, you're gonna have to just put more. Put more down that road because I don't, it doesn't even look like they can fund their budget this year in twenty twenty five. I think you're gonna be short, so you can start that as soon as you want. You might have to do an additional appropriation, but it's.
What increases our share of that, just a population?
It, it really has to do with um, like your, the cell phones and things in your area. So I don't even know if popu, I mean, I guess population would increase it. But you're just, what we find with these statewide nine one ones, it's stagnant. The revenue is very stagnant. So what would increase it is if the state went in and increased the fees. Like there's a set fee schedule in the statute. And I don't think that's been increased for a while, but it would have to be a legislative change at that point. But it's very stagnant, very stagnant revenue stream.
Is this, is this what's happening in most of the counties then?
Oh, yes. No, it's not just you. Nope, not just you at all. And there's something to do with like track phones where you don't pay that on track phones. So that legislation needs to be changed because there's more and more people, I don't know if they're doing illicit activities or what, but they're buying track phones. I don't know. So. Um, moving on to page twenty two. So this is your lit public safety fund and you do pay personal services. So you're paying salaries and wages out of there and some supplies. But this is where, beginning in twenty twenty eight, remember, you're gonna have to move these expenses, which are roughly. I'm gonna say probably by then, maybe roughly two point four million. You'll need to move to um, the general fund. And depending on how the revenues come in over the next few years, there may be some, you may have to start moving some of the expenses in twenty twenty seven over to general. Depending on how the revenue comes in. Um, we've got it at one point nine because you've been, you've been getting those supplementals and they're gonna go away. So I think the revenue is just gonna be one point nine and you've been spending over that amount. So I would spend this fund until it has zero, but you are gonna have to move the expenses over to general. The next fund is your, this is your lit economic development fund on page twenty four. And this is usually based on a plan by the commissioners. Um, but that too will go away. A lot of it's capital, which is fine. Um, but you have some recurring expenses under services and charges. So at minimum, five hundred thousand would need to be moved over. But capital will now have to start being paid, being paid out of general. Or you've got that option of increasing your Q capital development fund rate and getting an additional almost five hundred thousand from that. But with the local income tax, you should be able to cover those if you wanna move this capital over to the general. Page twenty six is your correctional facility, um, local income tax. The new jail payment is in there and that's about almost two million dollars, so you're gonna have to cover that. So that at minimum is gonna have to be moved over to general, which we did. We did in the analysis. But then you might have extra monies left over in this fund. What you can do is keep, you don't have to eliminate the fund. You just won't have any funding sources coming in. You can just continue to spend out of this fund for, you know, let's say the services and charges. Or you can even keep making the lease rental payment out of this fund until it's depleted. But just know eventually you will have to fund these things out of general. So I, I guess there's an opportunity, you could phase in your local income tax rate. Start at something under one point two and potentially phase it in if you wanted to do that. Uh, page twenty eight is that the restricted portion of your motor vehicle highway. So again, fifty fifty, we put fifty percent of the state revenue in here and fifty percent into the non-restricted. And we just assume that that's what you're gonna spend each year. You've done a really pretty good job of trying to find the restricted items to be able to spend out of here. So that's good and you, you've got a pretty solid cash reserve as well. Page thirty is the local road and street fund. So this fund can pretty much be used for the same purposes as the motor vehicle highway. In fact, the state board of accounts came out last year and said you could use it for personnel, cer, personal services, personnel costs. As long as it's not administrative. It has to be directly related to roads and streets. But most do what you do. You don't use it for personnel, you use it for supplies, capital outlays, projects. That's really, that, in my mind, that's really what you should use it for because you don't get a whole lot of revenue in there. And I'd hate to see for most of it being used for personnel when it's really supposed to be used for materials and road construction and things of that nature. And I'd hate to see for most of it be used for personnel when it's really supposed to be used for materials and road construction and things of that nature. So again, your, your budget, we're estimating about 711,000 for 2026. Is it me? I think it's me. Sorry. Page 32 is the cumulative bridge fund. So this fund is, is really pretty healthy, but it's, it's project driven usually. I see that you have a $3 million capital outlay budgeted for this current year, which is obviously gonna drop down the reserves, but that's okay. This is very much project related. What we see a lot of counties do is build up this balance and then they'll do a bridge, build up the balance and do a bridge. There's recurring costs that you need to take out of this fund, like for bridge inspections and things of that nature, but it's, it's usually up and down. A lot of counties ask me, you know, can we increase the rate? Yes, the maximum rate is 10 cents. However, if you increase the rate on this fund, you'll have to reduce the rate on another control fund like general reassessment or health. So it's usually not a popular decision to increase the rate. I know you probably need money for bridges, but you're gonna take away from someplace else. And then of course it does have the legislative impact because it is a property tax afforded fund. Page 34 is the Q and capital development fund and way down here at the bottom on line 31 shows your rate. You're at point 0150. You can go to point 0333. And again, that would generate another about 460,000 net of circuit breaker that you could utilize if you needed to. You've been operating so far where you don't really need to, but that's in your back pocket. If you need to do that, you can do that. You just have to do it anytime after January 1 and before March 30, I mean, May 31st. So you can't do it this year, but if you wanted to next year, you could certainly do that. You've got a pretty healthy balance and this one's good for capital outlays. And it does look like you are using it for some recurring costs, which is totally fine as long as, as, as long as it's related to capital projects and improvements. Page 36 is your rainy day fund. This is a pretty low fund balance for a rainy day fund. Hey, but there's no right or wrong answer here. Like nobody's gonna tell you, you need to have 10% of your budget in here. It's just, it's pretty low because if ever there was a big emergency, you're probably gonna be taking that out of your general fund cash reserves. Which in the end, if you transfer, that really is general fund cash reserves, right? But it's kind of nice to have it set aside in a, in a separate fund to where it can't be used for recurring day-to-day costs. So again, that might be a consideration for you. All it takes is a resolution by the council to approve that transfer and you can do that at any time throughout the year. You just can't exceed the, the annual limitation, which I think was 3.1 million. But you could do it annually if you had the money there. You don't, you're not required to though, but it is an option. Page 37 and 38, I'm not gonna go through that. That's just for you. It kind of just gives the statutory fund descriptions of each of those funds. Page 39 is where I wanted to spend a little bit of time on because it's showing the certified budget for each of these major funds. And then what you actually spent. So we have 2023. Your county general is looking really good. We tend, we tend to say that if you are spending 90 to 100% of your budget, you've got good, accurate budgets. And that's what we want to see. I, some counties brag to me, they're like, oh, we only spend 80% of our budget every year. I don't, don't brag about that because that just tells me that you don't have a good, accurate budget. Like you've got some fluff in there and fluff is hard to manage. Because if you all came to me and say, hey, we want to give a 3% raise, can we afford that? Well, if you've got a bunch of fluff built into that budget, I can't tell if you can afford it or not. Because I, I look at your budget and I say, well, you must need all that because you budgeted that. But then we find some cases that's not really true. So good job on the general fund. I'm not seeing any red flags there. But it also might mean that you don't have a lot of places to cut. So that's understandable too. But I, I like what I'm seeing there as far as the percentages. Reassessment, we talked about that. Spending, you know, we've got two years of history here, only spending about 60% of what's budgeted. County health, they always, again, this is being thrown a little bit, I'm sure by that Health First Indiana, because they only spent 83% in 2023. But then it's back up to the 96% level in 2024. So I, again, I think that's being thrown by that grant a little bit. The rest of these, I don't really have a big concern about. I mean, some of these are project driven funds, which we're gonna see. Sometimes you just don't do the project. The county 911 fund is again concerning, but we've already talked about that. They're spending every bit of what they have and then some. So that, that, you know, is gonna, you're gonna have to shift some costs there or more costs, additional costs. These other funds, I really don't see a major issue. I mean, highway, you know, in 2023 spent 84%, but then they spent 102%. That could have been a project that was delayed or something. So again, I, you, you guys are doing a great job on your general fund. You really are. And you're adding to your cash reserves, which is great to a certain extent, but you might, you know, it's gonna, you are in a good position to weather what's coming up. As long as you don't like start adding a bunch of recurring costs to your budget.
So you're telling me that we need to not give anybody a raise for the next couple of years?
I would never tell you that. I can't make the management.
You keep talking about reoccurring.
Well, so yeah, I mean, honestly, I would be cautious the next two years, cautious. 2026 and 2027 budget be very cautious for a couple of reasons. We've got all this legislation that hasn't been fully vetted out. We have the general assembly saying they might tweak some stuff when they go back into session at, at the beginning of the year. And you know, you're sitting good right now, but yes, if you go out and start adding a bunch of raises, recurring costs. Where does that put you in 2029 or 2030? So yes, I would say be very cautious.
So like the recommendation from the state this year was 0%. They're saying no raises.
I know, I know.
Would, would it, should we be, should we have our eye on that? Should we pay attention to that? Should we follow the lead of that?
I think you should pay attention to that. Maybe a better way to answer it is if you can develop a budget that has raises in it, that does not exceed 15.1 million. Then I would be, I, I would be comfortable with that as a financial advisor.
And when you did the 3% increase, were you, did that include personnel or?
Yes, it was everything except for capital. I think I flatlined capital, but you have hardly any capital coming out of general.
Does that include longevity?
It includes everything that's in the personal services category, salaries, wages, longevity, everything. But remember though, don't forget that you need to shift some costs from statewide 911 into here. I did not do that. So let me repeat that. I did not shift 150,000 of costs into this budget for statewide 911. So shift those costs first, then see if there's room for a raise. I mean, we've got this model set up and once you tell me what your budgets are for 2026 or what you're contemplating. I can run it through and see if it looks like it's sustainable, not only for 26, but into the future years. That's what's most important. That's the value of this model. You tell me what you're thinking.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then we'll run it through and see if it's gonna work. That's why I don't want to ever tell anybody they can't give raises. I'm just saying be cautious. Let's look at it. Let's put it in the model. Let's see if it works. I think that brought, yeah, we just have a few charts here at the end that you can look at. Just kind of comparing yourselves to other counties. Yeah, we can look at those. So page 42, that chart is not correct because you are now at 1.6829 and I will update that. But your rate now is in between Noble and Hilton counties. You've got a pretty low rate when you look across all the counties in the state. So it's not too.
What about that 150,000? So we, our budget's at 15.1.
It is.
26 requested. That's leaving everyone at current year's rates for.
Oh, with no raises or anything. Yeah, I would not exceed that 15.1. And remember, I told you, these are preliminary estimates. We may have even more accurate estimates come July. They could be higher. I hope they're not. So I wouldn't make any, you and you're not, not gonna make any final decisions yet. But once we get our parcel by parcel analysis built, so we can give you a really good accurate of circuit breaker, accurate estimate of circuit breaker, then we'll have a better idea. But yes, I'm, I'm thinking roughly 15.1 right now.
Plus that 150.
Yeah, don't forget the one, yeah, you're gonna have to shift some costs over. I think it's 150. That's what I roughly estimated was 150. Yeah. So what questions do you have for me right now?
How would your, your system, your format, your, your model? How could that be extrapolated if we start talking about using the reserves that we have now in our county general, which projected? What do we, what do we have, it's, what do we have in county general that's unspoken for? Or it's unbudgeted?
You just mean cash reserves?
Yeah.
Unsmacked?
Yeah, unbudgeted, unspoken for.
So we have, well, you gotta remember, we're getting revenues every, is that on your breakdown actually?
Yeah, if you look on page 12, I tend to want to look at these things at a, at the end of the year. Because if she gives you something right now, you, you have things going in and out constantly. At the end of 2024, you had 9.6 million. I would not use that for anything other than one-time purchases. Because once it's gone, it's gone. Like if you said, oh, we're just gonna use cash reserves to pay our budget for the next three or four years. Well, that cash will eventually be gone. And you can't, if, if you fund salaries and wages out of there, either you're gonna have to lay those people off or you'll have to build them back into your recurring budget.
And that's, and that's what I'm trying to understand completely. So if you just, if it is pick a number like 200,000 dollars that we took out to apply towards wages. What would be, what would be like the butterfly effect of 200,000 dollars?
I mean, it would take a while for you to burn through that. It would maybe be, you could probably do that for, I don't know, um, maybe 10 years or so. I, I, it's just not something I can comfortably recommend. Cause I don't know how many legislative changes we're gonna have over the next 10 years, so.
Well, that's right. And we always have a tendency, you're exactly right. We always have a tendency to look at it with a lot more caution than we do. Oh, there'll be something that changes that really helps us out. And a lot of times that happens.
Yep. I think the reason why you all are in such a good position as you are, because you are cautious. I mean, I've been working with this county for probably five, six, seven years. I don't, I'm losing track of time, but you have been cautious. You have been, have had relatively balanced budgets.
Well, my first year that I came onto council, we had a, we had a, we had $300,000 in county general.
Yeah, you had, right. And your cash reserves have bounced back up.
So that's, that's been a mindset for, you know, the last 10 years to try to get to the point where we're at. But I see what you're saying with having all that set in there too. Cause we can't just do it all at once as far as transferring it to a rainy day fund. It needs to be done on a regular basis.
Right, right. And then, you know, when big projects come up, like a bridge, for instance, you can pay for a bridge out of rainy day.
Cause you can take it back at more than 10% of the time. 10% for that year. You can take whatever's in there.
Yes, whatever's in there. The transfer is only limited at 10%, but if you have 10 million in there, you could spend that all on one project if you wanted to. And, and getting it shifted over then allows for you to kind of save it up for those big projects. It's not bad to have cash reserves. It's good. It's just bad when you use reserves to fund recurring costs. Cause that's when the counties start getting into trouble. Yeah, maybe they've been doing it for 10 years, but now they've hit a roadblock. You guys are in a good, in good shape to withstand these huge legislative changes. But keep that mindset of, we're not gonna exceed, for recurring costs, we're not gonna exceed what we bring in. And that's what's gonna keep you at this position.
But you're also looking at, it's probably a two-year process for us to lose and then regain.
Yeah, I mean, 26 and 27, I think are gonna be a bit of a challenge. But 28, then you have that opportunity to put in that local income tax rate.
Yeah.
And that's assuming council will approve that one.
Well, yes, right. Exactly, exactly.
But we're almost gonna have to because we're losing revenue that we're used to being able to have at our disposal. So I mean, it's all, it, it's just like when the state, you know, transferred all level six felonies back to the county level. You know, that, that, that screwed the county until they got figured, until they had the time. It's doing the same thing to us. It's making the state look good, but we still have to answer for it on a local level. It's still gonna come back to people. So it's just that transition period.
To make the decision and they're putting it on you. I mean, I've heard that some counties are gonna call it the bra and, uh, local income tax increase. If they're gonna title that on their resolution. I mean, it is kind of forcing you to do that, but it, it is still an opportunity. I mean, I'm glad you have that opportunity. But what's gonna happen is people are likely gonna pay less on their property tax bill, but more on the income piece. It'll be interesting to see what the savings truly is, if there is any. I mean, I want to start running bills to see kind of comparison. What are you really saving per household? Maybe nothing. I, I don't know yet. We, we haven't gotten that far.
Well, it depends on the makeup of that household.
Yeah.
Should help retired people.
Should, should. Yes, it should. Yep. Cause social security is not gonna be taxed, that income tax. That's true.
You see a lot of retired people get pushed out of their homes.
Yes, yeah.
So I applaud the fact that they're making an effort there, but you know, like you said, there's just so much that we don't know until it starts playing out.
Right. And how many more tweaks are they gonna do to those, you know? We just know what we know today. And that's why I'm telling people, please be cautious. Yeah, are you taking a big hit in 2026? No, it's not big, but I'm worried about future years.
So what's our next steps as we proceed through our, our budget process?
Just whenever you get to a number, I mean, Tiffany is good about letting me know. I can just plug it in here and see what it looks like. I, I would like to come back probably mid-July or whenever we get our model done to give you an update on what your revenues are. Maybe by then you'll have the budget amounts that I can plug in. It sounds like you're pretty far ahead with your budget. So then maybe I can come mid-July and say, okay, here's an update of where you are right now with your budget and how it looks like cash flowing out to 2029. And here's where we think your revenue is at.
Yeah, I think after having our initial meetings, I think there's definitely some things that are gonna, that are very, very likely to get cut out of just that, you know, initial. Well, I know there's some things that definitely will get cut, but it's just a lot of us just small numbers, smaller numbers, but it adds up.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially over years.
Well, the stuff I'm thinking about wouldn't, it wouldn't, I'm, I'm talking about some of the stuff like some of the, yeah, we can talk about it later.
Well, we'd love to have you back in July.
Yeah, yeah.
When we have a, a more realistic picture of our 26 budget and.
Okay.
And I'm sure you'll provide her with numbers as, as they become a little more concrete so that she can prepare for July. Is there any other, are there any other questions for Big Retili today?
What are the other, what are you seeing the other counties? How are, how are you seeing them respond to the state paying zero for probation? Are the counties trying to pick that up or what are they doing?
I think they are trying to pick it up in some respects and if they need to cut, they're gonna make cuts. I, I'm gonna, I mean, seriously, some of the counties I work with, they don't have any room in the general fund to pick that up. So there may need to be some, some cutting there, some permanent cuts. It's just, it's a challenge. I mean, not all counties are, are in good shape like you all are. There are some. But this is gonna be, in addition to that probation, this is gonna be a serious challenge going forward. I told you that some counties with the 1.2%, that is, they're gonna lose $4 million. Well, that's cutting workforce at that point. So I mean, if you have the ability to pick it up, then, then that's great. But if you don't, you're just gonna have to really take a look at that to see.
I appreciate you coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. And if there's nothing else, I'll adjourn the meeting.